I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge, led by Mr. Batt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Item B, adoption and approval of the agenda. All those in favor? Item C, special recognitions and presentations. This is always our favorite part, to have our students present to the board their reports on what's happening at their sites. Tonight, we have our representatives from our junior highs, as well as tonight we have special guests from Grant School, so I would like to have Principal Houghton introduce her students.
Hello, I am very pleased to introduce to you all Ms. Catherine Heard, one of our sixth grade teachers, and Shawn DeVincenzi and Anna Demme. They're gonna tell you all about what's going on in sixth grade right now, and school-wide.
Hello, my name is Shawn DeVincenzi, and I'm a sixth grade student at Grant Elementary.
Hello, my name's Anna Demme, and I'm also a sixth grade student at Grant Elementary. Shawn and I are both part of the GLT grant leadership team. Our classmates vote for us to represent the class.
As a member of GLT, we have weekly meetings with Ms. Houghton and discuss our school activities. We recently made posters for the Jogathon that is happening on October 19th. And last week, we had a special spirit day challenge for buddy classes. We counted participation and figured out the percentage to give a weekly award to two classes. Another exciting event that happened at Grant School recently was an author visit from Sharon Creach. McNear's intermediate students joined us for a talk in a multipurpose room. It's amazing to meet such a widely-known author.
In our classroom, Shawn and our physical education system. We have made a list of games and divided the entire sixth grade into their reasonable teams. We have been discussing sportsmanship, and our favorite game to play at recess is Casey's Vehicle. It is good for developing our soccer skills. We are also looking forward to our field trip to Westminster Rope Sports on October 26th. We will learn how to work as a team when we are there.
Our teacher, Ms. Heard, has finished her Peace Corps service as a teacher trainer in the Gambia. It's a very small country in West Africa. We're learning a lot about her experiences. For example, she had to change her name when she moved into her village. It made it easier for people to remember her name and know where she lived. Her name is Amanat Darbo, and most people in her village also had the same last name. Here is a name tag that she used when she was working there.
This is a wig that a local woman made for her to represent the Gambia flag. The women would use this material to make skirts.
We have learned many similarities between the Gambia and America. For example, both our countries are British colonies, and our official language is English. As there are other languages spoken in our country, Spanish, it is the same in the Gambia. For example, Ms. Heard had to learn to speak in English in order to communicate with people in her village. There is also a president and a vice president who showed you go to school there. They also like to play soccer, just like us.
There are also differences between our countries. The money is called the lassi, and $1 equals 30 lassi. Also, animals such as chickens, cows, sheep, and goats, and donkeys wander around the village. In the evening, the boys will catch them and bring them back to their homes and tie them up. In the Gambia, men can have four wives at a time, and here in America, men can only have one wife at a time. And Mrs. Heard's family, the host father, has four wives, and two of them live in her compound. Each of them has five children and share a room with them. Mrs. Heard has a very big family there. The weather is no different, is also different, and it is hot all the time. It rains only a few months every year. There is no electricity in her village, and she has to fetch water, bathing, and washing clothes.
During our buddy time, Ms. Heard is sharing pictures of her family in the Gambia. And then we talk about our families with our buddies who are in second and third grade. We will continue to learn more about the children in the Gambia and around the world during our buddy time this school year.
We are also writing letters to Mrs. Heard's students in the Gambia. Although they do not have mailing service like us, as we do in the US, the Peace Corps vehicle will deliver mail to a volunteer who lives in the village just a few miles from the school, and she will deliver them for us.
When Ms. Heard arrived in her village, she was shocked because there weren't any books at the school. She thought, "How could someone learn to read without a book?" It's like teaching someone to ride a bike without a bicycle. So she started a library, and people in her village fastened and painted her room. A local carpenter made tables and benches for the students. The US Embassy had outdated textbooks in the Peace Corps, delivered the books to the school, and taught teachers how to teach literature. It was a lot of work, but it was all worth it because students are learning to read, and the teachers are visiting the library every week with students. Ms. Heard is proud of the work she did there.
In the computer lab, we have been researching facts about the Gambia, and we are playing a game that helps end world hunger. It's called FreeRice.com. It is worn by the World Food Program, which delivers rice in the school in this Heard's village. For every correct answer, you can earn 10 grades of rice.
FreeRice.com has questions in all subject areas, such as English, vocabulary, grammar, math, and science. I even answered some questions to help me practice the Spanish language.
It has been fun learning about people in another part of the world. Their lives are much different from ours.
I'm learning a lot in sixth grade. I hope you enjoy your presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay, and can we have our student representatives from Kennelwood Junior High?
Hi, I'm Spencer Tokelson.
And I'm Ollie Sutter.
We're representing Kennelwood. So far, we have been very busy at Kennelwood Junior High. We have two new elective classes, Introduction to Digital Media and Digital Media Production. Students from these classes are interviewing kids and taking videos at lunch to be played on KTV, our very own television station.
In September, we had our second annual parent group camp. Our parents are invited to attend an evening presentation to help them support us through junior high school. Ms. Owens' dad talked about the adolescent branch. Ms. Dunne can explain how junior high work. Counselors talked about grades and attendance for promotion. And Ms. Wondron ended an evening with information about the internet and cyberbullying. All the information was presented in both Spanish and English for our parents.
Our culinary arts class is building a fabulous garden out by the gym. They have had a ton of stuff donated for their edible vegetable garden.
We are in the middle of the girls' basketball season, and we have an amazing seventh and eighth grade team. They have been supported by our boys' basketball team members, who led the crowd in cheers at our home games. The girls say they really appreciate it, and they play better.
Our leadership class has lots of fun activities planned for Fridays. Last week was pajama day, and students who dressed for the occasion were rewarded with treats at lunch. If the campus is clean all week, we get to have music blasted on Friday, which adds to the fun.
Last Friday was very busy. We had student council lectures during the day, and over 400 students were invited to our annual pledge-a-thon party after school. The pledge-a-thon is our only fundraiser during events of the school year. If a student brings in money, they are invited to the party. This year, we raised over $25,000. Part of our money raised goes to the party. We had a great time playing laser tag, going on the huge blow-up sides and obstacle courses, and rolling in the hamster hole. There was a video game band in Houston.
We are looking forward to reporting to you all the fun and exciting things we will be doing throughout this school year at Kennelwood.
Okay, and our representatives from Kennelwood Junior.
I'm Whitney Moore, and I'm president at Petaluma Junior High School. And I'm Mari Vasta, as vice president of Petaluma Junior High School. Our girls' basketball season is well underway, and our seventh and eighth graders are having a strong season with home and away games every Tuesday and Thursday. Back-to-school night was held the second week of school, and was well-attended. Our sixth-grade academy also conducted their own back-to-school night the second week, and familiarized parents with their new iPads. They had to recharge at home and be ready for the next day. The iPads and smartphones are important aspects of access to curriculum in the sixth-grade school academy. The sixth-grade academy also went to Walker Creek for three nights and four days, and it reported a successful opportunity to bond as a school and to explore the outdoor through hand-on science experiences. The entire PJHS school has been administrated the Renaissance Learning Reading Assessment, and teachers have been provided with their student 3D levels. Today, we held our Renaissance Awards Assembly, which recognized students who achieved a 3.0 or higher during their seventh-year year. Over 50% of our current eighth graders were recognized for this academic achievement.
Our study council, as well as staff, is examining the CST state results from last spring to identify areas of weakness and strength for attention, and also becoming familiar with the new Common Core standards in all academic areas. The PJHS honor band attended the Casadaro Music Festival the weekend of September 30th for two nights and three days. Students participated in nine hours of music a day in a culminating concert with three other Sonoma County Middle School bands over the course of the weekend. The first report cards are to be mailed this week, and teacher teams are reviewing the results to identify those students who are at risk and need extra support. We just conducted our first spare week of the school year, and we have created two new subcommittees in our ASP to offer music at lunch and additional Friday spirit activities. Our Monday assemblies are being conducted, and students are recognized for active and social accomplishments. Finally, our major fundraiser, the magazine and cookie dough sales are underway. Another of our major fundraisers and community events is our annual Posse Peds Out of Auction, to be held on October 24th from 5:30-7:30. Please come and support Petaluma Junior High School. Thank you.
It's always so nice to hear what's happening in the schools. I can't believe it's almost the middle of October already. We will be taking a very short recess. You are all welcome to stay, but we know that some of you may have homework that you need to attend to. Our next item will be just discussing our board goals. You won't have to stay, but in the meantime, if you need to sneak out, please do so. Okay, I'd like to reconvene. Our next presentation, Janas Cabado, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, will present our district board goals.
Hi, everybody. This is going to look very familiar. We already reviewed these once on September 25th. You can see that I failed to change the date. As we talked at that last meeting, that we would take this to K-12 Curriculum and Staff Development Committee, we have done that, and there are a couple of changes, so I just want to highlight those changes so that you know what we're talking about this year. You can see, our overarching goal remains the same, and we have our three goals underneath there. Support for academic support for students, support for the instructional team, and then the supportive learning environment. One of the first emphasis, I'll call it focus and emphasis that K-12 has chosen to take is the emphasis of the 21st century skills, critical thinking, creativity, communication, and collaboration. Which are, these four skills are kind of the underpinnings of the Common Core standards, 21st century skills, all of the different work that's been going on in the district and across the state and across the nation. So K-12 Curriculum and Staff Development Committee has, we did a little study around these four ideas, and then they wrote, I'll call them a white paper, on each skill. One group wrote an introduction to the four 21st century skills, and then we broke into four other groups, and they each took one of the skills, and they've written a little white paper that we're in the middle of editing, going back and forth and editing them. And we will be sending these out to the entire school district over the course of the next six weeks. One week. And I promise to send them to the board as well, so that you can see what the actual definition of it is, some examples, some resources around that particular skill, so that we begin to develop a common language around these skills, district-wide. Which is really important. When we talk about common language, and we begin to implement Common Core standards, and we're talking about instructional strategies, the common language becomes very important because we know that we're communicating on the same level, rather than me thinking that critical thinking means one thing, and you thinking that critical thinking means something else. Okay? So that's our first change. Our overarching goal remains the same here in increasing academics, and literacy remains exactly the same. When we got to mathematics, we had a pretty in-depth discussion about algebra and the whole idea of eliminating algebra 1a and 1b. And the committee felt strongly that we wanted to explore the instructional sequence this year, and then also look at intervention curriculums that would need to be supporting any new instructional sequence that we came up with. In the large document that you guys received, in the 1314 school year, it says implementing the new instructional sequence. We feel like that's our goal, to implement in 1314, but we want to make sure that we get a very solid base behind what we're doing before we just implement anything. So that was the reason behind that change. The second change comes in writing, and this is at the K-6 level. We have a group of teachers that are working with Bayside, which is the Lawrence Hall of Science and the Exploratorium. And they really wanted to include the science prompts and the things that they're working with around literacy and science, K-6. And that they are, they're going to actually be providing some professional development for the mini-conferences that the K-6 folks are doing. So they wanted to make sure that that got included in here. An important emphasis for us is science, and so it was important that we did include it. The last change, really, there are only three changes to all of the goals after we reviewed them all, this kind of goes with, if you look at the red text and then the black text right above it, it has to do with career technical education and courses, core courses that are linked to career technical education, and then CTE courses, CTE standards can be infused in those other courses, in the core courses, through the Common Core standards. So this is an attempt to really look at our career technical education linking with core courses, and then also core courses coming back and looking at CTE standards and CTE courses and what they provide in the hands-on, real-world thing, and bringing that into their courses. Yes?
What is CCSS?
Thank you. CA, CCSS, California Common Core State Standards. You are gonna see that a whole lot.
So that those two are connected with sixth-grade science writing? In my view, the, one of the biggest problems facing new entries to the labor pool in higher-level science/technology is being able to write about science and technology.
Yep.
So if we're starting it in grade school and then connecting it throughout, that will make a very big difference of the success of our students in the workplace later on.
And that is exactly what we're doing because the Bayside group is actually focused on writing, and writing in science, so that as that comes up through K-6, then 7, 8, and then into 9, 12, we should be producing students who are more able to write across the curriculum, not only in language arts, but all the way across the curriculum, which is the domain of the Common Core standards.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Good.
Those are really the changes that we've made.
Hey, Jane.
Yes?
Can you go back there?
I can't.
Talk about the focus that was, is that, you've had this, the issue with the CTE piece and the, I think it's the G standard for?
Yes. It's a G. It is the G standard.
Does that address that?
That does address that, and it is an attempt for us to create a plan, working with our CTE teachers, and create a plan so that we can help them and support them in infusing those A through G course requirements into their CTE courses. The two above there also address it, the red, the two, last two, because there are a couple of ways to get CTE course aligned to A through G. You can align the actual course. You can link it to a core, a series of core courses that are already aligned to A through G, and then the kids will get the A through G and the CTE together in one kind of group. Okay? And you can, and then also this last one, looking at the CTE standards and infusing them back into the core courses, it's kind of a reciprocal agreement there that we can find ways to get CTE courses or A through G requirements met for CTE students in any way, any of those three ways. Is that clear? All right, let me try it again.
Well, I think it'll make more sense, yeah, I think it'd make more sense when you give us actual examples.
Yes, and we will be giving you some actual examples. The committee, there will be a committee coming together of CTE teachers to look at the A through G requirements, look at where we might find linkages, and find place, the sweet spot where we can infuse these different requirements between the core courses and the CTE courses. Okay? Note, a plan. Okay, so we'll be working on a plan to get this ready to go, and we will be working on actually getting implemented in the 1314. So we'll be planning this year, and then implementing 1314. Okay?
When you say it's gonna be evaluated by subgroups, what are you talking about, the subgroups?
I'm talking about our demographic subgroups, looking at how are we serving students, not only our overall student population, but breaking that down by our significant subgroups, which are white, Latino, Hispanic, English-speaking.
I mean, I just want to make sure it's all down the highway by some committee subgroups that we've been at. I mean, you're talking about the educational subgroups that we currently have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Okay? So a plan, 1213, and then 1314 will actually start to implement and look at this.
And in the, this particular year, are there currently people working on trying to meet the G requirements?
We haven't identified anybody yet because we haven't had our first meeting, but we will be working towards that.
Okay.
Okay? We do have two CTE teachers, two representatives, that sit on the K-12 Curriculum and Staff Development Committee, which is really important because that's where Common Core are really being talked about. That's the driver behind this. This Common Core is demanding that we look at these kinds of integrations. Okay? All right. Support for the instructional team remains exactly the same, and supportive learning environment, no changes there. So, any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Item B, approval of the minutes of September 25th, 2012, and October 2nd, 2012. All those in favor?
Mary, wait, I have a comment on H. Do you look at H? That's the second page of the last meeting's minutes. If you read it, it says, "We're approved 5.0 Motion for Standards the Second by Trust of 401", so it's one of the other. I think it was 401, Sue. If you look on the second page of, it's page 5 here. If you look on that H, I think it's supposed to be 401 because I think Carolyn wasn't here, so it couldn't be 50. So I think it just, double-edged刃.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all right. It's okay. Just to clean it up.
Thank you.
Just to prove we read them correctly.
Yeah, she did it on purpose.
I know, she always puts a "gotcha" in there. I like her style.
Okay, all those in favor? Do I have the speaker parts? Item F, reporting activities and correspondence to school board members. We had a special board meeting last week reviewing our wellness policies, and it was a very thorough and good conversation. Hopefully, we'll be making progress on improving it even more. I was able to attend the Sonoma County Education Coalition along with other representatives from the district regarding education funding and the propositions that are on the ballot this fall. And there were various sporting events attended, including football games and cross-country meets. And then we also received word that the Petaluma High School Metal Shop received a grant from the Society of Manufacturing Engineers Education Foundation, and that Casa Grande's culinary students earned first place in the Sonoma County competition. So, some nice news from both of the high school sites. Item G, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Say.
All those in favor?
All right.
Under Administration and Human Resources, we have first readings of a few board policy. Does anybody wish to discuss them? We do have to discuss the Williams settlement to quarterly uniform complaint report summary, which says that there were no complaints, but by law, we have to say, we have to discuss them. There we go. Item 5, renaming of facility. Discussion regarding the proposed renaming of Petaluma High School's Durst Field.
Yes, the committee at Petaluma High School has been looking at, and now they're ready to propose, the renaming of Durst Field. We have representatives of the committee here this evening. David, would you like to just briefly share proposals? And introduce your committee members?
Sure. The, one of the pleasures I've had in working on this with this group is exploring the history of Petaluma High School, which many, many things that which I was unaware. David Durst was the superintendent, here he is, back in 1931. And he was a superintendent for 16 years until 1947. And Ellen Trueblood was the principal during that same period at Petaluma High. And both retired in 1947. I don't know if they went on and did anything special after that, but they served together for 16 years, and then that was the end of that. The Durst family moved to Sebastopol after that. He bought some land up there, and really, they didn't have much more contact with Petaluma City after that. I spoke with his sister, who's 92-years-old, still living in Sebastopol, and I told her what we were considering. That there was, that Steve Ellison was an esteemed coach who had been here for 35 years, who represented the community of Petaluma in a terrific way, that there was some community support for potentially renaming Durst Field. And she, she didn't say yay or anything, but she sort of said, "Oh, well, all right". And she's really the only person I found who I could make that direct connection with. Apart from that, and I can let the committee speak more to that, the main thing I heard was, "Will this always been Durst Field?". And it has been always Durst Field since 1942, when it was actually officially named that facility. I'm assuming in tribute to David Durst, he also had a son who attended Petaluma High during that period, from '39, '40, '41, who graduated, served in the Eastern Pacific, accommodates on Saipan, and then came back to the Bay Area and then eventually to Seattle, where he passed away in 1991. So, those are some of the pieces of the background around who the Dursts were, and I think this committee will speak more specifically to why they feel that Steve Ellison might be a reasonable alternative to that, and why they feel so strongly about renaming. So, Venusipians?
Greg Garing.
Greg Garing.
W.
So I don't know which of you, or all of you, wanted to speak to this, but...
Okay. Coach Ellison?
You're welcome to come in.
Oh, sure. Coach Ellison was an old-
Coach Ellison wasn't only a great coach at that school, he served there as a gifted educator for 30 years and was a role model for kids that played for him and he taught. I just think it'd be a great honor for him and also just a great idea to name the field that he was at and was so successful at and the school that he was so successful at and rename it in honor of him. I think it'd just be a great idea.
First.
I'm Martin Zubian. Like Greg and I graduated, so did Debbie. Graduated the first year that Coach Ellison became a part of Petaluma High School. He came up from San Francisco and put his roots in Petaluma and his, not only is he, he's a, obviously a fantastic coach and won tons of titles and that sort of thing, but that's probably not the most important part. The most important thing is the character and stuff that he instilled in Petaluma, the educational system, as well as the football program that lives on today that Coach Chris actually continues on his program. You know, Greg and I actually played for Coach Ellison and my son played for Coach Ellison. I can't say enough good things about him. He is the most stand-up person I've ever played for and I consider him a friend. And like I said, you know, you look back, you look at his coaching staff he's had the last 30 years, that people that coached for him are the people that have played for him. So I think that takes, says more about a man than anything is people want to, not only play for him, but they want to come back and coach for him. And you look at their staff now, you know, we're coaching the freshman team. And Coach Ellison was the backbone of that whole thing. And Coach Chris is, you know, continues on with that, with that same program. I think it'd be a great honor for him and for Petaluma and for the players and the whole administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ramona Zubian and I'm here on behalf of the Petaluma High School Athletic Booster Club. I'm the past president of the club. The president had to work tonight, so I'm representing her. The boosters feel that it would be a fitting honor to pass coach and educator at Petaluma High School to rename the field after Steve Ellison. He was the head coach of Petaluma High School's varsity football team for 31 years. He was an educator at Petaluma High School for 32 years. He retired in the spring of 2010. His record at Petaluma High School as a coach, he had 204 wins, 126 losses, and one tie. So he was very successful in the football program and we feel that it would be fitting to rename the field where he was so successful after him. So that is the athletic booster's opinion. The football team, the class of 1977 football team will, is gathering donations if this is approved to change the current sign from Durst Field to Ellison Field. They will pay for that change. Thank you.
Well, I did not play football with Coach Ellison, but my husband did. And I can speak on behalf of those people who may not have had him as a coach or even as a teacher, honestly, but I can tell you that he is a person of incredible, impeccable integrity and character. And what's been so impressive to me is that, get emotional. What's so impressive to me is that he has remained close to many of his students. We went to school, you know, 30 years ago, or 30, well, more than that, right? But, but we've stayed in contact with them and that's true with many, many students throughout the years. And he is there and he's involved in the community. He's involved in those kids' lives even as they become adults and he's part of, plays an important role. And I just think that's very impressive, so.
So this is here as a discussion item for the board to consider. And if the board so desires, they can request that we bring this back as an action item to the next meeting or further discussion.
Is there something in here about a public?
Hearing.
Hearing, is that a public hearing at the action item?
We would, we would have a public hearing at the next meeting. I didn't want to have that occur tonight before we know what the board's desire is, but we would have a public hearing at the next meeting.
And the action item?
And the action item on the same. There's a desire, I think, to have the name change occur at senior night, which is?
I want to say November 11th.
October 26th. At Petaluma High School, they thought it would be fitting to have it done, right? So then the new season would be under the new name. But I realized I didn't.
Okay, I thought it was there to this.
It'd have to be an action item on the 23rd.
Action item on the 23rd, the board desires to have a public hearing and.
I'd like to ask you. I think we should put it on. Do we need to discuss it now to facilitate that?
Just direct staff to have this as a consideration.
Give me a motion.
No.
No, I think you just need to bring this back as a discussion at tonight.
But I mean, do you want our feelings about this or to look at the policies or what are we doing?
Well, this evening, just to.
Decide if we want to.
Affirm that the board wants to consider this for action at the next meeting. And there's not a motion to do that, just discussion.
And then we get, we get the public input during the public hearing. If there was anybody else who.
Do you want our input tonight or do you want our input at the public hearing?
You can discuss.
You can do it.
Either or, we just can't decide at the next meeting unless we tell them we want them to do it.
Right.
I think it should be on the agenda. Do you, do you have anything you want to say about? I'd put it on the agenda.
Yeah. I think, I think we should, you know, have our opinions, you know, follow whatever public comments we receive.
That's what I'm saying. We'll hold our, we'll use our public, we'll give our opinion then.
Yeah.
After, because I think we all have sentiments about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good. So we'll add this to the agenda item on the 23rd.
Great.
For more consideration.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's very what Mike just brought up. I'm assuming there's a timeline, timeframe in terms of signing. Is there a feeling, is there any way to do a, or put this in a feeling?
We have to, we have to have a public hearing first. Yeah, unfortunately, there's that requirement.
Got it. The kind of money these guys have, they could do 10K. Listen, these guys got big wallets. I've seen them in action.
But you can probably.
Greg will change it during the game if it's approved.
Then you need to send them in at the board.
No, but my point to, to, you David, would be that you can probably have a better gauge of what your community also is going to show up and say as well, which should gauge how we would feel.
Right, well, I certainly pulled members of our, of our staff and they gave me fairly, fairly honest response and any parent that asks what we can do about it is. I do have a good pulse of where.
How about going to the greater community? Because there's a lot of people who went to Petaluma High School 30, 40, 50 years ago and Durst Field's always been Durst Field to them. Maybe we need to get them involved too.
True, and that I have not done until this occurs.
You know, it might be nice to, to put something in the Argus to let the community know if anybody would like to contact them.
I'm sure if you contacted John Jackson, he would indicate that this is, could be under consideration for the next meeting.
Okay.
That'd be great.
He'd make his whole day because you just wrote his article for him. Imagine where it would be in the paper, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we only have consent items under business services and under educational services. We have two hold items. Petaluma City Schools District 2012, 2013 Board Goals Approval. Recommended motion that the board approve the Petaluma City Schools District 2012, 2013 Board Goals. Do I hear a motion from someone?
Second.
Any further discussion? No? Thank you for all your hard work in taking our feedback and those of the curriculum committee and everybody else.
Right, thank you.
Putting that together. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and item three, proclamation. The recommended motion that the Red Ribbon Week Celebration, I said it without. Celebration proclamation for October 23rd through the 31st, 2012 be adopted.
Someone.
Second.
Who would like to?
This is an annual event, not celebrating, but developing awareness of drug prevention and that kind of thing across our schools. Our schools decorate for red ribbons. The kids all wear red ribbons. There are guest speakers who come into the schools to talk about drug awareness and drug prevention. So it's a great focus activity for this week for the kids.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Future business and calendar of activities for board members consideration and agenda items for the next meeting. Well, we're clearly going to be discussing.